Ignore everything you hear.
Welcome to the special meeting of the Village Boston Spot Board Trustees, today September 21st, 2022, starting just at 2:04 PM. Apologize for the slight delay on start. I'm assuming everybody can hear us on the audience. We'll rely on our village attorney to give us a high sign on that. Okay, that was a yes, so we're good to go. So let's do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to everybody that's joining us via Zoom, and also live in person, and to the trustees for making time on their busy schedules. We're gonna go to public comment number one right now. I don't see much here. We have three items that should be pretty cut and dry. They're more or less emergency-based motions that you can't probably wait till Monday. We have cleared most of this through our attorney to make sure that she was okay with it, and she's given us no indication. So before we do move to that, I will give you the opportunity for anybody that wants to raise their hand in-house or on Zoom quickly here to let us know they want to speak for three minutes on public comment number one. There is another session later after the discussion about the New York Forward application. Anybody in the house? That's no hands going up. Anybody on Zoom? I see nothing, so take it a motion that the trust, the village authorizes the DPW to continue with the necessary repairs on the DCM unit and crane sensor on the dump truck through HL gauge in the amount of $5,500. Trustee Raymond.
I'll second.
Trustee Cormos. Discussion. Make sure you go loud, like I said, and see if your microphone's gonna kind of bother you, but we've got you. Don't worry. Any discussion?
This is an emergency.
I need to get this repair ongoing and continuing because they found some. Welcome to our Bath Street drag strip. We'll see how it goes. For now, it's gonna get some air in here, but um. So yes, to a degree it is. Just get this thing ongoing, get the dump truck back, and we both work the work. Any further discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carriers. Can I get a motion that the village approved the purchase of pedestrian and crosswalk signs for a total not to exceed $10,000? I'll make that motion. Trustee Raymond. Trustee Fandanza. Discussion. Now, we were trying to get an exact number for what will essentially be the High Boulevard sets and two other sets of these signs. And Jeff unfortunately was unable to get a specific number. He was saying opt his daughter's wedding, basically. So we're not gonna bother for that. We had a good idea of what the number should look like, and we put in a little bit of extra just in case. We have two sets that essentially, actually more than two sets. I think what we did was we said up in Boston Avenue or McMaster was another set, and then two additional on top of that. We may have to come back for a little bit more at some certain point, but we'll like get at least some of these ordered. The school district PTA has been reaching out, asking about trying to put one around Malta Avenue. I, my answer was, we want to talk with Ed Martin first, see what their feelings are. If the school facility security folks believe that that's a needed thing, it'd be the idea. They can send us a letter that basically justifies us doing so.
Yeah, that's the one on Pine Street.
I think they're talking right on Malta Avenue, that they got a little bit of a drag strip situation going on there when parents try to pick up their kids in some format. So we'll get specifics, obviously, but something around Malta Avenue School might be another one, and then we'll have one additional set to be named at a later date. They may not go up now because of the timing issues with everything they're paving, but we will have them on hand so that when they do get some time, they can install them at that point.
Are they gonna include any of those center of the road signs? Because we bought those, you know, at a discount. We, I think we got seven of them. And, you know, there are other places where they, they are, they do seem to be working.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
My, my personal experience is they work. Sean, you're saying they're not like standard protocol or something, but I would support getting more of those, because I do think they slow people down.
They're, they're part of a accepted treatment under PSF guidance. I just, my personal issue with them is that eventually they get run over, destroyed, stolen. They can't really be out in winter months, so it's kind of a, you know, it's not a permanent thing that DPW can do. Now we've created a maintenance situation, so. And they have plenty on the way.
So far, they haven't run them over on Hyde, so.
And also, the numbers here are coming from the fact that we're gonna need about $3,000 to $4,000, we think, for the planing down of the sidewalks for the crosswalk, which won't be unfortunately until after the Front Street renovations, according to Jeff. So that could be June to July, but also allows us to give DOT enough warning of what we're gonna do. And the other, the other part of the $15,000 essentially for these signs, so that we basically have some use of the $15,000 in this budget here.
This is 10, so another five, you're saying that's gonna be the.
That's the safe, that's the safety measure we've got for the sidewalks, if we can get them done during this budget year.
If they do this one. So, so can this, can this include those centerpieces?
Well, right now, I would tell you, let's wait to talk to Jeff when he gets back about the cost of those, because remember, we got them at a discount, so I'm not sure what the full value would be if we went out to get them. So right now, I think the intention that Sean had when we had our meeting earlier in the week was, let's get a few more of these sets, and then we're good to go with respect to the pedestrian warning signs.
And I'd like in the future to discuss doing more striping on Hyde, because there's been comments that when cars are parked, you know, on Hyde, it really slows the traffic down. And there was the recommendation for a bike lane, and that, those are all paying really. So, you know, not now, but for the future, we could put the, you know, like you've done here on Front Street, the parking spaces in, and provide a bike lane for the cyclists.
Let's talk about that another day.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, future measure indeed. Appreciate the intention behind it. All in favor?
I oppose.
I wanted to add one more question, which is, these are the signs with the arrows going down on each side of the road.
Right. And a warning sign.
Yeah, head ahead signs.
Yep. Now, all in favor, start off that. I oppose. Motion carriers. Can I get a motion that the village entering into an agreement with Western Contracting, expense $59,630 for the repairs in the room for the building occupied by Union Fire Company Number Two? This motion is made utilizing the emergency exceptions to the village's procurement policy as the repairs are needed to prevent near-term damage to the building caused by roof disintensities. Three bids were obtained, and the lowest bid is being approved. The board authorizes the mayor to execute said agreement with Western Contracting after review and any necessary amendments to such agreement by the village's attorney. Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Cormos. Discussion.
Can I just ask, I mean, it looks like you did do bidding.
This would have required normally an RFP because of the size of it. Once that became acknowledged, we were in a bad position here because they did the three-bid approach, thinking that was sufficient. So there's confusion. We've had a full discussion with them as to what will be required in the future, and they understand better now. And some of that is based on some of the rotation you see going on in the fire departments. We have to make sure that we're constantly on top of who's making decisions and the process, or in charge of the process. Here, obviously, there was no mal-intent. They tried to do the right thing, and now we need to make sure that the house doesn't deteriorate further.
So, so the only thing skipped here is going through an RFP, but you did get three, which I think is critical.
And this is a low bid out of those, $59,630, originally budgeted $60,000, so we're probably under. Any further discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carriers. Let's move to old business now. The real intent here for a meeting was New York Forward application. Heard of that? Take it away.
Um, just briefly, I sent you guys a draft on Monday. Obviously, if you have any like edits and stuff, I'm happy to, I want those to be made. As far as like typos and whatnot, but the committee worked really, really hard to provide answers to the questions that the state was asking us to answer. So we methodically went through each of the questions in kind of bold sections of the guide, the guidebook they gave us. It was kind of interesting. They had two sections where they kind of touched on those questions in different ways, so I tried to look at them from different perspectives when writing it. But also, there were a few other opportunities where, you know, they, they outlined what is a New York Forward community when they're trying to help communities decide which grant to go for. I thought, why not answer it, show that Boston Spot is a New York Forward community, took the extra effort to make it look very nice, I hope. And I just really want to applaud the work of our local planning team, and I do want to name them again because they worked really hard. Donna Jarderas, Kelly Zalini Elliott, Carol Johnson, Tina Mangino, Andy Mannion, Karen Martel, Natalia Martinez, Martinez, Bree O'Connor, Riya, and then Dana Warmer. We have two of our committee members here today.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, honestly, the work was hard. It was an undertaking that they handled really well, and I hope you had an opportunity to read it in full. So, that's kind of what I have for today.
Now, we have this habit of talking over each other. We'd like to go around the table type of approach, so that we are not gonna get into that. I know some people might need to get back to work. We're doing work stuff today. So we want to move through this, obviously, with full attention being paid to it, but at the same time, as expeditiously as possible, I have respect for everybody that has work. Sean, why don't we start with you? We'll go clockwise around the table.
Um, I guess I'll start off first of all.
I mean, I actually pulled the microphone to you as you talked, because in this case, it's one at a time. It'll help us out. You're fine. Yeah, at this point, it might be the right idea.
But I just want to first start it out. Great job on the application. It looks really sharp, really professional. I just want to make sure we got kudos out for that. The only thing I really see from, and again, I'm looking at this from a standpoint of we want to get the grant, and we don't want to have anything on it that is going to bring any question to the reviewers as to whether or not this really is fully a business development. And secondly, I don't really want to promote anything that I know down the line is going to be a maintenance nightmare, and is just gonna be a money pit. So for those two things, the only thing that I really saw, the two items that I saw that really kind of concerned, well, there was three actually. The first one is where we're sitting. I know we've had, we had a conversation a couple of days ago.
Took a full-on tour. It was great.
And I've thought it over and thought about it, and I just think the idea of pursuing a grant for an elevator for this location doesn't seem to be necessarily the best use of our ability to obtain a USDA grant. I think there's a lot of other buildings could use that grant. And I also feel like we've already established that the village hall does not satisfy the requirements of the village. We need a better building with a potential for overlap, but not only village administration, but with police, with court. And this building is never gonna do that. So I guess my thoughts are, is to put almost three-quarters of a million dollars into a building that we probably want to sell. We don't have to do that. I think in ballpark of 400 to 450,000, we can get this resalable. So that a business, which the intent of the forward grant, could come in here and with a minimal initial investment could get their business rolling. And I think if that's the approach we want to take here to help get some improvements, because there's stuff that needs to be addressed here. This is without a doubt. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be addressed here. But I don't think, I think a USDA grant could be better used other places, and I think just to get this ready for resale, I don't think we need to ask for that much money, and it may, because we're saying, hey, we just want to get rid of it and allow a business to get in here and hit the ground running. I think that is going to increase our chances of obtaining this grant. And the second thing was, I realize everybody wants a public restroom. My personal experience with the state, there's several locations where we have public facilities in parks or near village or urban areas. It is a constant, constant, constant maintenance issue. It is a never-ending funnel of cash to maintain it, to repair it. It is an invitation to nefarious doings. I just think it's a bad idea. I, I understand there needs to be some sort of need when people are walking around to be able to have facilities. But I'm wondering if our current buildings that have existing facilities could be enhanced rather than create a standalone facility. And perhaps when we do the revolving loan for the businesses, maybe we can incentivize that with some of the local business to say, hey, you know, how about we can give you money to enhance your public restrooms and allow people, you know, to be more free, just not customers to be able to use them rather than have something now the village has to maintain, DPW has to maintain. And I've seen to properly maintain those, I know down in City of Rensselaer, there's guys down there twice a day cleaning it. And I just, I don't think we have the staff to do that. I mean, obviously, the kiosk that you mentioned alongside that, I think that's a great idea. I think that's something that would be good. I also think maybe some sort of, you know, when you, you know, to tie in with the Wi-Fi, I think that you mentioned this in the meeting, that maybe, and I don't know if that's what the $50,000 funding is for the Wi-Fi or not.
That's for a full mesh system right off the bat, instead of waiting for business by business over years to get that achieved.
But maybe create some sort of app or something that when you log on, it just pops up and has an events calendar or something of that nature. I think that, you know, whatever the cost is associated with that, I think that is a good one. I think that's a high percentage get. And lastly, I would say the proposed parking garage, I mean, they're pretty clear that they don't want to fund parking garages. And the interpretation I got from the guidance was more of, when you're building a structure, you can incorporate parking into that structural arm. I don't think they really was intent that, okay, I'm gonna build a parking garage, and I'm gonna do like a pedestrian pathway over to a building to connect it to a business. I think that's.
We did, we got your email on that, actually, and there was a change made. I'm not sure if you saw it, but there was a change made to actually connect it to a new commercial building. Because the other idea that came in throughout this was we need more commercial spaces, regardless of what happens down at the Bath Street Hill. And so the front of that now would be a commercial building that would be a public slash private approach, because somebody might want to come along and buy that. But with the parking garage servicing that and the community as well. So you're right, they do not want stand-alones, and that's why the change was made in there. So we appreciate the capture. Because you'll read one page of this, see one thing, and then you read another page and realize, oh, crud.
Well, yeah, they're just trying to keep it as broad as possible. Okay, given that, I mean, I still, I still have reservations. I think that's gonna be the anchor that makes us lose it. I'm just saying. So, because first of all, feasibility of building a commercial building, and then something sizable enough that the cost of building the structure actually provides enough parking, given the size of that space, that lot, really questionable. I mean, it's highly suspect, and without actually having preliminary concept plan or design plan to determine feasibility of it, I'm just not sure if that's what we want to put on the grant at this time. But I'm not, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying it may not help our odds. That's, you know, basically where I'm coming from. I would really like to get this grant, and I just want to kind of soften the edges of certain things so that it's more appealing, it is more centered to the core of this, which is business, private business development. And I think we could make an argument for the building here to say, hey, we're gonna fix it up, and we have plans to relocate, and we just want to resell it as soon as we can get out of here. I think that that is probably gonna be a more rational argument to them. I also think that I'm gonna throw an option out there for consideration, other than a parking structure. We could increase turnover, which would increase customers simply by metering parking.
Technically, you shouldn't be having to pay for parking meters, and this is something that actually we should capture another day, because in the modern-day parking meter or union meter structure, essentially a Park Now, or whatever company you choose, Park Mobile, I think is another one, installs them, takes their cut, and that's how the whole thing is financed. So realistically, we don't have to include that here, because that is even less of a need than the Wi-Fi was. The Wi-Fi basically to jumpstart getting the mesh network throughout, whereas you get it, the parking meters, you're basically saying to them, come on in, come in their neighborhood, install them, yours are the rules that we want, what's the, what do you think we should be charging? To make sure that we get these parking meters essentially. So it's a conversation definitely for another day, but we do have to get some buy-in from, I think, the Front Street merchants that are gonna want to know that we're not gonna be chasing out their customers in a way that's insensitive or a little too money grubbing on our part.
Well, the thing is, is we could use the revenues that we obtained for it to keep funding the revolving loan. I mean, so it's, that was one of the reasons I was thinking, if we put it in here, even if there's any startup costs or seed money that's needed for it, you know, that, that might be something considered. And, and I know that there are companies that do that, but there's a lot of municipalities who just buy them, and they get, they get all the revenue. So it's another consideration, like George, for instance.
But who maintains them, out of curiosity?
The DPW maintains. Or they contract out. It's really just an electrician that maintains them. You know, that's what, what it is. You know, maybe somebody with a little more electronics background, but there are companies that do that kind of work.
Just, I'm sorry, just for those that might not know what we're talking about, just to explain the parking garage retail space. So, thank you. That was a huge catch, and you've thanked the committee, and we very much appreciate it. One of the things, the reason in part to suggest a retail building or mixed-use building is also to return some of that public property to back on the tax rolls, you know. So there's opportunity there, you know, to get some more revenue. And it is a thing that we constantly hear from businesses. I mean, Dana gets calls all the time, is there space, is there space for, people want to come to Boston Spot, which is awesome. So that, that was the thinking behind it, and I, I don't know, not an engineer, you are, but to me, that seems like a very big lot that's not being utilized as well as it could be. So.
I don't disagree with that. I just think there's some serious challenges with grade, drainage, and a lot of things there that, that, there's some big hurdles there, and I don't, again, I don't know what the yield with spaces would be, given the, the size, and you're also putting a commercial building on there as well. I think it might, you know, might be limiting. There's a certain square footage that you need just to make a parking garage functional, because your ramps have to, can only be a certain grades. That means they have to be sold long, so they take up part of your footprint, and then your, your parking is limited there for. And, you know, I would assume too that if it's a parking garage, is it, is it gonna be just public parking as well, or is it gonna be one, one level associated with the commercial property and then other public? I guess that would have, you know, should probably be fleshed out.
As far as the grading, I can at least say from experience where I park in Albany, I park in the Sheridan Garage between Eagle and Sheridan, and that is huge help, you know. So they, they managed to fit that in, and it's not a very big lot as far as footprint. It goes up more. I mean, I, at least the way I read this, this grant guide for the application is that, you know, they're not expecting us to have, it is helpful to have more information than not, but I, I think that's why we get a planning team, and I think that's why the committee suggested this. It kind of hits several objectives that this community has wanted for a while, so.
Survey showed that pretty clearly.
Parking.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no. I saw the survey. Yeah, it's on everybody's mind, and that's kind of where I was thinking. Rather than a huge capital investment, if there's a way we can create increased turnover with existing spaces, we might be able to satisfy the lack of parking.
Also, to answer your question, the idea that got integrated in is the base floor, whatever is the, let's say, ADA acceptable floor to do it on would be handicap parking and electric vehicle charging stations for the first time on our community. So, or at least, or village, I should say, because Milton's just done that in their parking lot. So that was the concept there to bring that in, because you don't want to put them necessarily on Front Street as charging stations, because it would possibly cause spaces that we need to utilize to be, you know, sitting there empty, because nobody's charging, and we would require somebody to be charging if they're in that space.
Again, I'm not against the park construction. I believe everybody here knows that I always talk about parking. I, and, you know, whatever, you know, street case, skate improvements we make, we make, obviously, whatever parking we lose as a result, we have to make up somewhere else, because we're not at a parking surplus. We're probably still at a parking deficiency, so. But again, without a parking study, we won't know that for certain. But like I said, I'm not categorically against it. I'm just saying there's a lot of hurdles in that particular project. It's probably not the best feature for obtaining this grant.
Well, remember too, that there's two, there's three grants per region, and that region is one of the 10 regions, seven of the seven regions in this. 2.25 million, 2.25 million, and 4.5 million. The view here is that this 2.25 million associated with the commercial building in rise is the second half of that, should the 4.5 be awarded, and maybe we can state that more clearly, that that's what our intention is. If we were lucky enough to get 4.5, here's the additional thing we would be talking about. But, you know, I think the base project here or projects, assuming that you have double chance to get 2.25 instead of 4.5 would be the first.
Yeah. In that packaging, I think that, you know, that it's fine.
Liz?
Okay, village office, I agree with Sean. I think we need to do the necessary repairs and essentially do the exterior, because that is, you know, what would lead to economic development. The exterior would not look like it does now.
So the 550, that's being reflected by the Vabella study.
530.
Give or take.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would, you know, which is a sizable chunk, chunk of money. I'm also against you stating that we're gonna be going for USDA grants. I mean, if you want to just put it in, is we'll go for grants. But again, the elevator is, you know, 500,000 is a big chunk of change. And as Sean said, if, if we end up, you know, just getting this building to where it's really saleable, I've said it numerous times, a private developer can, you know, come into this building, they can apply, you know, to have it designated historic, they can take historic tax credits, and they'll pay one-third less to do the work here. And that, to me, is economic, and put it on the tax rolls. So that, to me, is a, is a better path than us spending the taxpayers' money, which is a grant, to, you know, both from New York Forward and USDA to put here when somebody else can put in their money. You know, the doing First Phase Library, I think is excellent. I would like to see if we move money around, maybe if we could put the extra, it's 195, which is only 25% of the cost, because they would get the rest from the Sals grant. So we're looking at leveraging their money, which I think is something that they look for. You know, how can we take our money and leverage it, you know, with other grants or other sources? Let me see, the, the bathrooms.
We just wanna make sure that.
The bathroom issue, again, I also agree, I looked up Ryan Park, they have a full-time attendant. So I don't think we wanna add to the Village staff a full-time attendant to, to monitor that bathroom.
Your folks are aware we have bathrooms currently in Kelly Park that aren't attended.
I know, and we've had problems with them. So, and then, you know, so I think, you know, some other solution, you know, maybe Bottle Museum. I mean, we'll have to work out the hours and availability, but I would rather see bathrooms provided in occupied or other, you know, other occupied buildings than, than to do a freestanding. Also, you didn't indicate where it was though. So that, that I think is.
Yes, or really realistically, where the plumbing and electricist are most available, probably in the backyard for the wall, if you're wondering.
So that one, Whizwall, very much for that, of course, as you might guess, fiber optic. I got the impression from the presentation that it wasn't gonna cost us anything and now I see $50,000. I mean, it's a fair amount of, of money. I'm, I'm not sure about putting, I know you use their map, but actually sort of putting the names of vendors into the grant because I think if we did elect either through this grant or otherwise to do a network, you know, we'd wanna see other, other vendors, what they would offer, how much, what their deal is.
I have a meeting next week with Matt Arqueline in Green, Greenpoint, is it? So we, we are open to other vendors.
Yeah.
We're, we're giving, you know, the fact that they did a lot of work on their own dime essentially to help show what this could look like, we're giving them at least that homage here and that's about it.
Well, I just take the, the, they've expressed an interest, you know, and leave their, their citation next to the map, say, this is.
Leave it there, but take out.
Yeah. We don't wanna be putting into this that we're gonna go at, you know, we necessarily wanna use this vendor or that.
I think it's hard because the grant had said, like, show your partners. And that was like the one clear, like, that had already, not that we contracted with them, but they have expressed interest. That's, I included it, so.
That's not a big deal. Streetscape, I think you're gonna need more to do a real, you know, real streetscape, particularly since, I don't know, I think Ben can talk to this because he talked to the folks about the infrastructure, the underneath stuff. It might be possible to get, you know, some, some of the, the money we might need, maybe the match piece on, on a sewer and water improvement under Front Street. And that, you have to show where that benefits, not just the Village, but replacing those pipes and doing that would benefit all the businesses along Front Street. So you think you could make a case for that? So I'd like, you know, to see a little bit more dollars there. I felt your 15,000 for marketing and branding was way too low, way, way too low. I think that's an important piece and you really should, you know, BSPPA has one, one employee, and then the rest is all volunteer. I think if the goal is to a new overall community branding, you know, include signage as well, which as we've seen, takes up a fair amount of money, 10,000 for signs, that, that, that needs to be upped to bring in a firm and, and really do a sophisticated marketing campaign, you know, with the materials and, and how we're going to. I think actually the Village could use a new brand. I mean, we've been, everybody loves the Village of Friends, but how long has it been in the Village of Friends? And we may need a reboot. Again, on the, the parking garage, I think that's somewhat premature because we don't have the information. Back a couple of years ago, Bob Beal counted 800 spaces available. And that was before we did the shared parking. I think we've got this shared parking that's not particularly known. People, you know, I tell people about it here in the Village, it's, oh, I didn't know that. So we need basically probably signs that say parking, you know, evenings and weekends down here. That would help, I think, the parking meters is forefront, the critical areas in front. And on Milton, maybe up Louse Street would do a lot, a lot. And we have to consider, you know, I think maybe we should consider a parking study. You know, what about the residents, where do they park? Do we maybe designate an area for them within a walking distance where they know that's a parking area? And they stay off of the, you know, Front Street where we, we really want, you know, customers, at least during the, you know, between 11, 6 a.m. or something. You know, we don't want them during business hours. So I think there's lots of other steps, as, as Sean has said. You know, for this grant, I want us to get this grant on this, this parking garage issue. I almost, almost would consider, just go for the 2.25 and, and say that's, you know, that's what we want. There's nothing that says you can't in a couple of years go for another round. You know, because this doesn't seem as baked as, you know, the others where we have some planning, we have estimates on this building. We, we have, the library is probably the most developed because we have concept drawings and estimates and everything. And, you know, that project's basically ready to launch, you know? Hire, hire the folks to finish the drawings and build it. That's, you know, they do have the requirement, I think, you gotta be able to get whatever you've got in here up in two years, right?
Yeah.
Two to three years, I think, the answer there.
Yeah, so they're looking for projects that are ready to go. And I don't think this, even if it's, you know, we prove that we need a parking garage, this is at that level.
Ben, it's been waiting patiently.
All right, well, hold on. While we grab that. Some familiar things, yeah, it's on the front of the park. I also think like, it's, it feels like sort of a placeholder, like we put it there, but there's really nothing behind it yet. And they, they may get the feel that that's the case. I don't know, the politics or the, the grant politics of just putting it in because you're, because we don't have something else that's gonna take $2 million to go to the fore or I don't, I'm not sure it helps our application, I don't know. When I saw that on page 14, no freestanding garage, I actually called there and confirmed that. And they said, yes, it has to be part of some other larger project. The way it's presented here, it feels like there's the garage and then there's this add-on versus there's some big project and then we're adding the garage. You know what I mean? It, it feels like the garage is driving that $2 million or whatever, and they may not want that. So, but I don't know for sure if, if it hurts us to put it in. I also, and I'm not an engineer, but it doesn't seem like a very big space for all that stuff there. And I, I, I put in, I, I sent you an email with some of my ideas. And one of them was to do some kind of study. And then afterwards, I wrote, oh, the grant's not gonna fund studies like this one, you can't ask for that. But it does seem like there were probably multiple options when it comes to parking. And, and maybe we, a garage in that space might not be the best option, I don't know. I, I certainly worry about the whole, you know, charm aspect of the Village as well, but also just the practical, can we even fit it there? Certainly parking was obviously a huge consideration. What percentage was it, do you remember in terms of number? Well, I didn't put a percent because people, you know, one person could give us five ideas or something. Yeah, it wasn't like, all right, 10% of people. But, but it was, it was one of the, it was actually, it was like parking and marketability. Those two things were the top ones, that they're very close. So parking is undeniably an issue. Yeah, I, I happened to be down here. Yeah. I happened to be down here last weekend or two and early, early in the morning and the, the parking spaces on Front Street are full and it must be the tenants because there's nothing open. And so it would be helpful if we could, and I don't know if they stay all day or not, but it looked like everybody was shopping on Front Street because there's a whole set of cars on Front Street early in the morning. So if there's some way to manage that, anyway, parking's definitely an issue. I don't know if this park garage is gonna help or not. I definitely think, first of all, that it looks, it's very nicely written and looks great. And thanks for putting that together, it's a lot of work. We definitely put our best foot forward as the Village, so appreciate that. And I also like a lot of the ideas in here. So like the library, the grant funds for businesses, grant slash loans, Whizwall Park, Wi-Fi network, streetscape improvements, we'll be finding sites. It's interesting how many people actually mentioned in the, in the survey, signage. We need to know what's here and how to get there. And, and I think that could really help with parking and bathrooms if we have public bathrooms. You have, where's the bathrooms? Make sure people see that. At the comprehensive planning meeting, some recent new residents, they call themselves California weather migrants or weather refugees. Said.
Like when they're undergrowth.
Weather refugees. But anyway, they, they had an interesting idea, put more signs up about the history of buildings and just the history of the neighborhood maybe, and just to add color to the neighborhoods. And, and anyway, signage is great idea. I could see putting some of that arts funding into the, into the marketing because part of the arts is marketing. And so I think I agree that we could use more money for marketing. I agree with that. I, I, I also hesitate putting too much money into Village Hall. My biggest, biggest objection with Village Hall is like, there's not a good meeting space. It needs to be a conference room somewhere in this kind of facility. And so I, I think we do need to find a different place. And so I would put, also, when I talk to them, they also are less interested in like, sort of purely municipal projects than real commercial, you know, economic development, real partnerships. And I think they'll see this as more of a municipal thing. And I think they'll probably see the libraries, so it's very heavy on municipal versus developing private businesses. So I would probably not invest as much in the Village Hall. Definitely, you know, the external structures that need the facade for sure. And, and if, if there's money that comes out of that, either, I don't know, the library needs more. I did ask if we could fund the, the infrastructure under the park because, you know, we wanna improve the park, but we can only do so much. I don't know if you've got any information on that. What she told me was, well, the first thing she asked was, where do the pipes come from, where do they go? Of course, I didn't know.
Tune in in April, we'll give you the answers to those questions and more.
I didn't know exactly, but they have, they have, if they're coming through here, they have to inch. We have to assume there's gonna be some impact on businesses if they fail. But so I would think if it's worded in certain, you know, that there's these pipes coming through the business district that need fixing and they need fixing that we can fix the park. I think there's a case to be made to put additional funds into Whizwall Park for the underground infrastructure as part of that project.
I mean, if you're gonna relocate, for instance, we're gonna relocate the fountain, get it going again and create a new space for it.
You're talking about water.
Obviously, that's all underground work, relocate it. So we could inadvertently bump into one of these things that we're discussing anyways. So I guess my thoughts are, it, it, you can make the argument that, well, if we're gonna do what, there's a friend of yours, Ray, that came up with that kind of master plan for the, for Whizwall.
Yeah, he's a husband of a return.
Yeah.
He's the husband of the return.
So if we're gonna kind of use that as a template, I would think that obviously, we're gonna have underground utility work as part of some of that work. And obviously, we're gonna have to deal with whatever's underneath there as a result. So it may be a pretty rational logical thing to say, well, no, if they're gonna do these improvements, we're gonna have to deal with whatever's underneath too, so.
Also, the pipes are coming down here, I gotta believe, Front Street buildings are connected.
Well, exactly.
And so therefore, it impacts those businesses.
If we can make that assumption in the grant, that will help.
I'm a little concerned about that because at least every assumption that I've received or information from those, we really can't do that.
In fact, our office hour session was made clear to us.
So we have to be very careful about how we.
Yeah, it said infrastructure, but then it said like green, so it didn't say sewer. You're right.
Like greenways, I think is what they were looking for, not necessarily.
Well, we could do some of that in Whizwall. I mean, there is a handful of stormwater because, you know, heavy rain, stormwater comes flowing down Louse Street. And we could divert some of it into the park and do.
Don't, don't forget, we, we've said blank dollars, 150, I think ultimately, for master plan and renovations. That's decently high. And I, I think in the back of our minds had the idea that there will be some need to do for, to relocate certain things in certain areas. And I think it's that ancillary piping movement and infrastructure issue where you can get away with it most likely, but you're not making a centerpiece of your topic or item.
We need to articulate that in the language, but.
Right, okay.
I'm gonna let Ben finish, so let's.
Yeah, sorry. I, I support if we, again, if we were not doing all of Village Hall, putting some funds, more funds into the life, the microloan grant thing, try to put the idea of trying to leverage that to increase accessibility for buildings and fences and sidewalks. And, what else do I have? Oh, I, I, I tend to agree also that I think it'd be more cost-effective and just easier maintenance to just enhance an existing public bathroom. There are public facilities that we can look at, maybe, you know, again, I sent this email. But, you know, whether it's the library, I don't know, Eagle Matley or the, the Bottle Museum. And there is one more, oh, even Villa, I don't know if downstairs is fully utilized.
This was a back and forth.
All right, so it would require some study, but, you know, it would be folded into the maintenance of those buildings. It would enhance those buildings, you know, because we, we create a nice public space with good access. So I would, I would go in that direction. I like the idea of, and we need signage to show people where to go, literally.
Most places I've been where they have a visitor's center, that's where the public bathroom is. How long has the exam has not been very, I, I love that they're wonderful partners, but it hasn't really worked out.
Bottom museum.
Bottom museum, like, it hasn't really worked out that well that people, it would be a signage issue, but it's just, it's not super convenient, you know? I think maybe something closer would be helpful here.
Bottom seems the road.
You're talking about people with mobility issues, if they're down here already, it's, it's kind of a hall to go over there, you know?
The back of the library needs a total reworking to become accessible. And there is, you know, bathrooms on that bottom floor, that might be a feasible, it's right next to Whizwall, so.
Paul Mace is gonna throw a brick to the window at you. Careful here after doing all of his plan already.
I just, I do think if, if we can figure it out, it would, maintenance-wise, staffing-wise, again, improving the buildings that exist, folding it into their maintenance.
It might be more than one that, you know, it might be part of that incentives thing to incentivize some of the, the businesses. And so, you know, if you need a bathroom, there's one here, there's one there, there's one here. I mean, when I travel, I just go in the hotel and, and use theirs.
Liz Cormos' Deep Dark Secrets coming out here in our special meeting today. You wanna, you wanna, I'll give you the quick anecdote. Everybody used to have a membership to the New York Sports Club in New York City, not necessarily to work out, but because it was the easiest public bathroom you could find. It's a number of locations they used to have back when. There's, there's a deep dark secret in New Yorkers back when. All right, if you're done.
Last, yep, go ahead. I, I also am happy to see some kind of streetscape on Front Street. It'd be awesome to have some kind of pedestrian, more pedestrian-friendly there. Would have to deal with the parking. We did have a number of comments in the survey saying that the existing Front Street setup is, they feel is very dangerous.
Would have to deal with the parking. We did have a number of comments in the survey saying that the existing Front Street setup is, they feel is very dangerous and difficult. In terms of that parking and then backing out and then pedestrians, it's hard to see. So a number of people said, what they're now isn't ideal. So if we can continue to think about that, but some streetscape issues would be great.
That type of thing, you can just change the annual and have revert back.
Yeah, so it does the hard sell.
Yeah, on top of honestly, head in parking and then leaving is quicker than a parallel parking opportunity. I mean, my three attempts each day at a space really don't move traffic ultimately. I'm gonna, yeah, no problem. My turn. And then I'm going to actually open up to public and then we'll go into motion mode essentially and do further discussion in there, if that's okay with everybody. So when originally we got this application and the news about this and everything else, the building we're sitting in. It was number one in terms of this is the box checker and Sean and I had this discussion, we walked upstairs, showed him the second, third floors. The other day inverted it last week as well. Not sure Liz and Ben, if we've been up there recently, especially with now more clearts up there. But they talk about removing vacancies in upper floors. And the intention of some of the things you're seeing here is to remove vacancies in those upper floors that we have currently. Making it a glorified storage facility is not the correct use for this building. And it's disappointing. It's still in that state, but we're getting there. At least we're getting there. Refacading in a way that would be especially for gateway approaches. And somebody I think had sent an email saying it's not a gateway. It is a gateway because you go from any direction from this building essentially, and you're going to a different part of what our community is. So. To me, this, this is much gateway. It's one of the tallest buildings, if not the tallest building in the village ultimately. And depending on how you count the downstairs, probably is how you make that determination. But refacading it in a way that is. Pleasing to the eye and welcoming to our community, I think was hugely important. Just the overall making it functional approach. ADA accessibility, we lack it in this building. And so in tandem with this grant, the idea would be. And I stated this, I called up Chris Hunsiger over at the USDA the other day, who was very great with us and. You know, in some ways we're pre-approved right now for USDA grants and loans because they know our financial situation. They know what's encumbered, what's not encumbered, our fund balance. And so we have a certain advantage and he was very welcoming to the conversation, saying, you know, as long as we have money, by all means, go do it. So when it comes to this building, he gave the advice, you know, there's a debate about elevators. Are they building or are they equipment? If they're building, then they will be only subject to low interest loans, which is still. A step ahead, but not as good as an all out grant. He said, if you characterize them as. Equipment or fixtures, then you have a step ahead for grants. And he said, there is an argument to be made that it's equipment ultimately, or at least the body of the elevator and the. Equipment room or piece of that equipment. So at least in large part, you could characterize as a part of your plans and submit it to them. And they would have the hard task of trying to deny that characterization. So. The idea here is while we're doing all this, making this ADA compliant, remember the USDA will not give a loan if the building isn't ADA compliant, but. Money used to make it ADA compliant would qualify essentially as grant money in that situation. So. We've been kind of up, down and around on this building and I think it's apropos that we have the meeting here today. It's just a reminder of how stuck in the seventies we are in some facets of this. Just because it's an old building doesn't mean we can't do better in this space, even in our own usage of the space. Sean and I had a kind of, what I call very good discussion about the ideas of, hey, we could redress the second and third floors, sheet rock and, you know, again, the. Ceiling and floors fortified sufficiently, making sure structurally everything's okay up there. And some of the best views in the village by far. And some of the, I think if it's accessible, some of the best spaces period that we have on upper floors in this area, we're smart about it. And I, I'm not trying to take away anything from our other businesses and buildings in the area, but it has the most possibility. And so we have about three different things we could do. We could basically renovate it. Use it as a landlord essentially to get businesses or offices up there, which creates new employment, which was another. Box to check off in the application and live with that for a while. Or we could renovate it. Get maybe court, if we don't get another space or court, for instance, or maybe for in police type functions or something along those lines. Up into those floors or at least one of the floors and rent out the other top floor or something like that. That's an option or. Renovate it, sell it and get, you'll get an appreciation and value by doing all these things because this is money they would not have to sink into it. Okay, but it's not, it's, it's the state's money. It's not our money per se. And so. Or the federal money, actually, it's USDA. So it's an opportunity to make this building what it should be. I think we have a certain. I, I would say obligation to oversee this building while it's not historic by definition. But it, but it's not historic by definition of the historic entities out there. That's how we got into trouble with the last iteration of what to spend to do the facade. It is something that's special to this community and we should be doing everything we can to make this building. Special for the community in some way, shape or form, whether it's us or not. And again, it checks off all the boxes. There is the back and forth about library or whatnot. And I think the balance for library is good because. You brought up the two to three year question. I don't think you get past phase one B in the next two years. On the library because of the amount of money in the grants they have to go into. We talked to Andy Mannion, who was on our local planning committee. And she sat down with us on Friday to talk a little bit about it. She was thrilled with the three fifty idea because of what it's going toward, which is an addition. In ADA stuff in that building as well. So. You know, somebody that I respect and value in two functions here is the chairwoman of the library board. And for what she did, she was very instrumental in this. So thank you, Andy, for all her hard work on New York Forward. I, I, I was open minded to hear, hey, no, this should be seven hundred thousand, absolutely. No, three fifty was great, she said. And so that's why I haven't challenged that at this point in time. So. Long story short. The things that really were central in my reading of it the first few times with New York Forward, when we first got it, and then the subsequent information. Was get rid of the vacancies, create jobs, refacade yourself, get some accessibility wherever possible. Those seem to be the biggest things that. Maybe actually even. I guess buttress D R I, which is the bigger version of this ultimately. But a couple of these things I think were a little bit more special or peculiar to New York Forward in terms of. It's not just a walkable community. It's a community you can drive to and then walk around and everything else. And but what's going to drive you to drive into this community ultimately is the question. I think they're trying to answer for the revitalization ultimately. So. Micro grants and loans for refacading, other accessibility and vacancy issues throughout that we're not going to be able to identify. We could, we could. Do what other communities have done and put out this all call for projects thing, which I saw on numerous websites for villages that were doing their webpages and trying to name their projects. That to me is kind of a crap shoot of, okay, everybody wants a piece of the pie. I get it, but who's going to actually deliver on it ultimately? And so I think our more targeted approach says to the state and to the regional committee, hey. We have projects we've identified or that we are capable of pulling off here. Or we've got money set aside specifically, and this was actually embraced in the discussions we had with the micro grant slash revolving loan. We've got money pooled to assist in some of the furtherance of this program, what you want to see in it. So that's why I was very thrilled and hopeful to see what the local planning committee came back and approved. Now, if I can, I would like to open it up to, where you give folks on Zoom, we're going to call this the public comment number two. Open up to folks on Zoom to raise your hand now would be a good time to do it while we turn it to anybody in the room first. And what we'll try to do here, if technology allows me to, is get whoever's speaking on camera. I will leave the shot here, so I am still here. But anybody want to speak to this in the audience?
Not accustomed as I am to speaking publicly.
You're gonna be right here.
Hi Carla. Oh yes, my name is Rory O'Connor. Business address one nine nine Milton Avenue. Several things. I think that first of all, the job that was done by this whole entire group in the short span of time that you had is nothing short of miraculous. And regardless of whether we disagree over some of the content. I think that this document being presented is going to put this village on the map as far as these people are concerned. I don't know anything about New York Forward. But I can tell you that's one impressive piece of paper that you put together. So congratulations on that. I tend to concur with everybody about parking garage in this context. Liz and I sat on the parking and revision committee. I've got Liz, it seems like three or four years ago now, but whatever. We, we had a long conversation and what we ended up with is that we don't have a parking problem in terms of space. We have a parking problem in terms of reception and people don't like to walk. All right. But we've got more than enough spaces, especially with E O C now, which is signed, I might add. People don't read the sign, but it's there. The same with the county offices being available for parking. So I don't know how you repurpose or restructure that, but if there's a way to, to do so that can go to where Ben went, which is the underground, I'm a big fan. I think that the inherent problems we have with, with our, our underground infrastructure. Will come back to haunt the businesses on Front Street and everywhere else relatively soon. I don't think we're going to get a whole lot more use out of those particular types of scenarios. So. I don't know how that gets done. This might not be the grant to do it, but I do think that it, it needs to be thought about very hard because. It's a real problem. It's there. The, the library is, sounds like a plan to me. I don't know how often the library is utilized, other than when I go there every two weeks for the, the village board meetings. But I do know that it's a benefit to the community and I think that that makes some really sense. I'd like to finish my remarks about this building because we do have a disagreement here. And I guess it's probably because I have old sawdust running through my veins and I'm a great believer in restoring and saving old buildings. And I think that this is absolutely the center of the village. I think that I've walked through it from top to bottom when Larry first took over. Back then, and it was completely filled with paper. You couldn't see anything. So first of all, structurally. I don't think there's any issue. You could park a tractor trailer up there and you wouldn't have a problem with the amount of weight that those, those beams carried. But more importantly, this building could essentially be everything we just talked about. All right. Let's just, if we use our imagination, the downstairs building inspector's office, the fire chief's office and that all, that could be the welcome center. That could be centrally located. It's an ideal situation. It's in Village Hall. This area here could be expanded and we don't need the conference table here, but we certainly could make offices and have a reception area. And then have more space for the village staff here as well as you've got two unbelievable floors upstairs. The, I think the area, either one of those floors is, is bigger than the library basement. In fact, I'm almost sure it is. The ability to retrofit and utilize that, get the elevator and have a place for our courts. Our police and a conference room for, that Ben pointed out, we sorely need. Seems to me to be an ideal scenario. One step further. One of the things that we looked at a few months, a few years ago was my God, what do we do with these windows and how do we keep the cold out? These are historic and we can't change them. And it's, you couldn't build a storm window. Well, you actually can. All right, there is. It's a company called Innerglass that I looked up and found about three years ago when Larry's office was like a wind tunnel and he wanted to do something to stay warm. Innerglass specializes in working with historic renovation architects and they manufacture a very unusual product. It's an expandable, essentially a polyplexiglass window. But it looks and fits on the inside and it matches the profile of the window exactly. And it's openable. And it's also cheap. When we costed it out, this was, this was three years ago. I think the whole building, all the windows was less than twenty five thousand dollars. That would be an amazing way to make it, I'm sorry, Frank. That would be another creative way to look at this. I think this is a huge asset for us and I think we should put as much time and effort into making this building the center of the village. And a, a place for the police, the courts and the conference room. Thank you very much for your time. I aspire, sorry, I kept going.
Thank you. If nobody has any response instantly, I will keep the camera in that direction. If anybody else has anything to say. You have a hand? Come on up, sing, I think you'll see yourself in the picture and keep that there in your mouth.
Hi Carla.
Cause she's looking at me. Gina Marosi, Tenel Glory Lane. Rory, I like your ideas, except I see a couple of issues. Park, the shared parking is great for the restaurants at night, but does nothing for the day parking for the businesses, businesses that are only open until, say, five o'clock. This is where I think a parking garage would benefit. Oh, sorry. This is where I think a parking garage would benefit because it's the daytime, daytime parking that is a huge issue. As far as this building goes, I am all for redoing this building, but as I understood it, I thought the grant said that it had to be. Job creating or business creating to qualify. Am I right on that? So by making this all office would not make us qualify. Is that correct?
Well, offices employed, don't they?
Okay, but.
You're talking municipal office, depends on if you're increasing staffing.
Yes.
If you're talking about you could be using substitute space, so you're freeing up some other building by doing it. There's that option. Or a possibility or on the upper floors, if you use it for private office space with your landlord essentially in it, then that's creating.
Yes.
Businesses and jobs. So there's different ways to qualify that whole thing.
Okay. And now I want to turn to the library. How is the library extending, expanding, falling under those parameters?
It's tough to, I, I, I think where we're putting our money is, at least in the list. It's enhancing your space with additional space. At least we're building something that's not currently there and making ADA accessibility. So at least it's checking those boxes. And it's also in conjunction with other grants, which shows that there's money and effort already going in toward that. So that's why it was embraced.
Also serves the low income community.
Yeah, and it's place making, community building, then.
The, the discussion or, you know, argument, whatever you want to call it, that's been had on this is question of where do you draw the line? Because if you're not checking a lot of different boxes, committing one third of the two and a quarter, let's say, is a tough thing to do if you're not checking a lot of boxes.
Like, I think your point is also. On that if this building were completely municipal, I mean, she said on the phone to me that that is not as attractive as a.
That's what I'm saying because it's, you're, you're just shuffling your space around rather than attracting new business upstairs, creating new jobs upstairs. That was, so at least I think if you're going to do it, maybe at least one floor needs to be dedicated to. New business and employment. I don't know how you do, you know, do that with the library. I mean, will expanding create more positions? I mean.
I mean, what is the lease rates for office space here? I mean. I'm thinking of return on investment, you know. Yeah, that's it as well, but there might be a need for lawyers. But what are the lease rates?
I'm sorry. In one ninety nine, it's different because they're all inclusive rents. That is to say, it's not a, not a question of rent per square foot. It's a question of all of your utilities, parking it, cleanup, everything is included.
It's a similar type of.
But I, well, it, I would say that you, for office space in this area, if you're looking anywhere above. Gosh, twelve to fifteen bucks a square foot, that'd be a lot.
Yeah, so that's what concerns me for the money.
Well, yeah, you're not going to get, you're not going to get a return on investment in terms of office space on the second and third floors.
Reminder, one of the reasons this grid exists is because if the spaces were going to have huge returns on investment to start with, they would have been already renovated in these downtowns. I think that's what the awareness of D R I in your court is, is that you need the ability to give a crush to some of these buildings to redevelop the right way. And hopefully maintain themselves from that point forward so that they're creating the jobs, creating the businesses and the opportunities. If this was going to be a million dollar game for somebody, I have a funny feeling they would have done it twenty years ago. They didn't because there is a certain, not money fitness to this building, but just not the ability to appreciate it.
Well, you're probably the total, then you're, you're probably a year out before you can actually open, open the door to the business. Yeah, so. Yeah, so that's I understand the need for A, it's the updated code. B, I see there's.
Sorry.
Should I? I just think that. I think the argument could be made, this is in the commercial business district. So for somebody to buy this and be a commercial business is exactly the intent of New York Ford.
Right.
So I think a good argument can be made to update this to the point of resale. But I don't think for this grant, an argument to update this to be an overlap in a municipal building, I think that's a loser. I think that's a way to lose the grant.
In terms of different options to build, as I just did, that there are multiple ways to build in the in Mark will dictate.
Each one you're saying is is, you know. The odds of that happening become more and more minute. Okay, we're going to switch a building. I think that isn't, I think the odds of that. Actually obtaining a grant or being irrational is. That's when you start grasping. So again.
In some way, you should perform though, we're basically saying, whether it be this building or elsewhere. We're going to be creating spaces, we're going to build new businesses and opportunities. It may not be this building because we may utilize it for something else, but it's going to free up space in the the police building, court building, or something like that. And again, what we put in this document is not seen as biblical in any way, shape or gospel. But it's seen as a starting point for planning coming and refine your projects with you once you're awarded the grant.
No, it's a planning. You have to go through a planning process, but the thing is, is. You know, somebody's got a project where they're going to take a vacant building and turn it into commercial use. They're going to beat out this 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 one.
Can I, if I can finish. Because somehow my time turned into a group conversation. That's why I was disagreeing with Rory stating that we do need to put commercial in here. If you can bring one floor in and use the court and the P D, that's wonderful, because then you free that building up. And you go with Mark's wonderful idea of an art center. He's that's what he wants to do with that building. Arts are huge right now when it comes to grants. They're huge for public wellness. They're huge for public engagement. So working that in that way and bringing business to the third floor, that could be a winner. Okay, again, with the parking, the parking garage daytime is a necessity. At nighttime, we've got all the lots we share. We can't share them daytime. You've got spas, you've got stores that close before that shared parking kicks in. So you may want to reconsider that. And also, what is to prevent you from putting public bathrooms with the parking with that building? That they're talking about, if that's the case. We're not Bryant Park, Liz. We're not New York City. We don't need a staff to take care of a bathroom 24/7. Okay, we're not Bryant Park. We're Boston Spa. And one last thing I wanted to say. Before you go volunteering businesses to make their bathrooms public. And before you go taking away parking from the businesses, perhaps you guys need to go talk to these business owners individually, because I've done it. I spoke with them all when we had our community engagement event. Okay, you know, you need to know what they want. Do not talk at them. Listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Yes, so.
I mean, an art center is another municipal use. If that empty out that.
What she's saying is sell off that property. And let someone private do something with that property.
Love that if we can find a place for court and police, I don't know if they're going to fit up.
I don't know. I just didn't get the.
I think Mark's going to talk now to it, so hold on one second. Smile for your door in public in a moment.
Hi Carla.
Can I pop in real quick?
She's saying something.
I actually have. I have to go into another meeting at 3:30.
Right here.
I have to get to it 3:30.
Dave, you got a link to 3:30?
Oh, I have to leave at 3:30. If if you need me, just I'll I can have somebody else come in and sit in my office. If you need counsel, but I don't think you'll need counsel for the rest to to move forward on the the motion. You're muted.
If we do, are you available by cell phone?
Um, I am going to be sitting here on another meeting, so just yes, you can text me.
I think that's sufficient. Thank you.
Yep.
No, you're you're muted.
While we're waiting.
Okay, so yeah, again, to talk about what Gina just said. An art center or an engagement center, we have a great concerts, we have great movies in the park, but that only happens four months a year. With a center, we can, you know, do that year round. We can do concerts, we can do movies for kids, we can do all that stuff. We can bring people in. People come to our village, not just for the restaurants and for the stories that they've been to a dozen times. For for events like Family Fun Day, for to see the birdhouses, to see the arts in our community, and we need a center for it. We need to. Part make it a part of the code. Excuse me, we need to play a part of our village in a real way. Communities all around the country are doing that. Now villages are getting lots and lots of money for just this. And we're very lucky that we do have a corridor, Route 50, but. We need a way to get people off Route 50 on their way to Saratoga and come into our village. And, you know, as we lose the, if we're going to lose the the county people. We're going to, we need events, we need programming to not just energize our own community, but the people who visit here.
Who would who would build or renovate and all that?
Is that to be determined now?
No, I mean, well.
Who's going to renovate it?
No, no, I mean, who's going to pay for it to become an asset?
Well, no, that's where that's where the money. So you tell the grant people, we're going to renovate that to make, but to move them. They need to move here. So.
To build.
Yes.
But that's not in here.
Well, we just we just went through a different scenario.
Right. So the way to justify renovating this building and making this into 85% municipality is by saying we're creating this innovative. Exciting, you know. Engaging community center, which has bathrooms.
Yeah, so Mark, it is true. On the survey, there are a number of people who said, we need more things to do downtown. We need something for our kids to do. You may not know about V A C S thing.
V A C C is great, but it's a playground. If they don't.
Well, it's childcare more than.
It's childcare, exactly.
But anyway, so there are people who think their kids need more to do and and more things to do in general in the downtown. So I mean, I think we all support the arts. Just a question of how to get there.
Yeah, no, I think that an art center is great. It's just.
Well, let's not call it.
Sounds like another non-property tax paying use. That's the problem.
Yes, but the it's offset. The taxes are offset with the amount of people coming into the village. I mean, the amount of money you're going to get from one building is not going to, you know, shake the bank. But the amount of people coming into our village, we look how many people came in just for Family Fun Day. The stores were ecstatic, the ones that were open. People, when we have the birdhouses, people just walked around to look at birdhouses. We got so much press for that.
No, I agree with you. It's just that from an economic development, they are focusing on for-profit businesses, not not.
I I think the points that they made here in both directions, I've got three hands on Zoom. That's why I'm going in this direction. I'm going to warn the trustees at this point that I'm going to be switching microphone objectives here in terms of how it's going to work. I'm going to mute these. So if you do want to respond to somebody that speaks. We're going to be using basically the onboard microphone on the computer. So you'll have the loud, the loudest of them all, Sean. Then you'll obviously you'll you're closest to it. So just be aware of that. I'm going to mute here first.
Okay, we are now resuming on the onboard microphone. Might be a little bit different audio, so apologize if it sounds different. Judy, I'm going to assume Esposito will be able to talk right now once she unmutes. Go ahead, Judy.
Okay, um, I, you know, of course, like that's the fact that, you know, the renovations to Wizwall Park are mentioned. I think you can. Say more about the importance of the park. You mentioned that the grant wants green space. The business owners want green space. Sean had mentioned that of the master plan a couple of years ago. Well. We have had a lot of discussions about that master plan and we have changed a lot of things based on what the community wants. In moving the iron and moving the spring to a more accessible location and making it functional would bring in visitors. People coming to get the mineral water. You could put up historic markers in that space. You talked about, you know, something with the bathrooms, but that that would be a good spot. To put the historical markers and these are all things that we have discussed that are friends of Wizwall Park. But I think you in that word about Wizwall Park renovations, you need to act. Emphasize that, you know, there's it needs, you know, a pavilion for community, for music, for. You know, the benches and everything which we're working on, but also just. Just to bring people into the village and have a place to hang out, that that's that's nice and accessible. You did mention the word accessible. But anyway, so that's just what I wanted to say about the importance of. You know, I think in the grant that you you did mention about the green spaces and that's important. So. I think we can really, and I think 150,000 is about what we have estimated. So, you know, we're looking forward to working with the planners with this. So, thank you.
So Judy, you're not mad at this after all? You're not mad at us after all?
Um. Have I have an issue with the word club. Where we're working, but we'll work together, you know, it's a it's it's exciting. And and we have, I have looked up some grants that, you know, we may be able to apply for. And that would be more money left over for other for this grant if we get it. So.
And I have a question for you, Judy, not to interrupt you, but go ahead.
I just wanted to. Judy, I think you have a good point about. Under the Wizwall Park renovation section, Judy brings up a lot of sort of good details. That would strengthen this piece of it and the photos are beautiful, but they're very big and you could probably. Make those smaller and put in more text to justify the Wizwall Park. When it comes to, okay, yeah, we want a pavilion and, you know, just to talk a little more about it, the survey also. Many people wanted to enhance and promote green space. There's probably more to say about that Wizwall Park renovation.
People do have.
Hold on one second, Judy. We can't do.
I think I've written there, you'd short or, you know, make the photo a little smaller.
Okay, Judy, go ahead. Were you just trying to say, then Bernadette's got something?
I I would just say that, you know, people do use the park. They they walk through it. They look, they hang out before their reservations at the restaurants. They bring their restaurant food into the park, so we need more spaces for people to say eat. You know, maybe some smaller tables, picnic tables, and, you know, these are all things that we can accomplish, you know. We looked at the park, that landscape architect. You know, thinks that there's enough room for everything that that the community wants, you know.
And for a second, Bernie, that did you have something to add?
No, I mean, I just, it's unclear to me whether that original master plan was ever fully accepted by the village government. What we're saying in here is that we're going to seek that help. And I will add, you know, it's it's fair to add that, you know, we're we're seeking to look to, you know. Make those spring waters more accessible. I will adjust it. So that that's all I.
We're not, we're not even concerned about that original drawing.
Yeah, so that's why I didn't.
Yeah, we. I keep telling everybody.
Referring back to it. I think bringing in the spring. No, I think that's a fair point. Yeah. Yeah, bringing it because that is a unique feature.
Judy, last words from you?
I was just saying, we've told everybody, forget the past, forget that past drawing, forget. We we're starting new, we're working together and we're taking everyone's considerations. And, you know, so that's it.
I guess it's fine. Just I want to make it clear that's why I didn't include it because we're we're not referring to that. That's all. So.
Oh, no, we're not.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think I think we're on the same page on that, Judy.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to mute you down and then I'm going to bring up Keith Lewis. Next, one second. Keith, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can. Good and loud, though. Just make sure that we can hear you at the table. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? Keith Lewis, 308 East Ty Street. So a couple of observations. One is, of course, the fact that this is the. This is like the 11th hour and some of these ideas are really, really great. And it would be wonderful to hear them fleshed out a little bit before your application goes in. But if I understand correctly, it's it's going in rather immediate. So I don't know how much. Can be really accommodated or changed. So in the future, it might be wonderful if you have the chance to be able to get the board involved at an earlier start date. And that way, maybe perhaps it'll be fleshed out a little bit more and you you can use this great brain power that you have available. In hearing about the bathrooms, so I I haven't read this full grant proposal. I'm listening to what what's being passed around. But hearing about the bathrooms, I I have to tell you, I haven't seen one in freestanding that's not. Attached to something or someone who has the ability to monitor. Or at least has the ability for someone to say, hey, there's a problem. I haven't seen one successfully done anywhere, anywhere. And I I think that I would be cautious about what kind of cost that would be to the village afterwards. I think the idea that Gina had said about the library, what what does it generate? I think it generates value to the community and it encourages the community, but there again, you could have incorporated. The welcome center or the bathroom to either the the library or the communities or the bottle museum that might have been able to. Accomplish both things or or even in Village Hall. Where, you know, on that lower level, you might have been able to do something. And I think all of those would have been. Great choices. And I I don't know if you can make the change at this point or not.
Keith, can I just jump in for one second? Because I should reveal to everybody or remind everybody. Is that the library is a different municipal building in terms of its autonomy level and how its board operates and everything else. So we can't just go and say, you're going to do this. It would have to go through that process. And Andy Mannion had, let's just say, didn't volunteer the library for this at any point.
Right.
And so, you know, if she had brought that to us, we would have maybe considered it. I I don't think the library necessarily has the staff or ability.
Yeah.
No mind. So I just wanted to remind everybody on that point that it's not the same as, let's say, just saying as a village board, hey, we can turn this building into it because we own it.
Right, right. Yes, yes, I understand. That's why I'm saying perhaps a little bit earlier on to be able to have used the information and and vetted it to be able to see how it's done. Might have been helpful because I know the library has done some studies and does have proposals and does have things. I don't know if it can be accommodated or adjusted or not. I don't know if the bottle museum, you know, could have been incorporated and and. And incentivized to be able to host it, but I do think a freestanding public bathroom, although it would be wonderful. Would be difficult to maintain and would ultimately not provide the goal that's that that you're looking for. And I think same with the parking in terms of I I believe that there is a lot of parking, but we have to do a better job of educating people. And I think that there is technology that's available now that can pretty much. And I think that there is technology that's available now that can pretty much tell you anywhere where there's parking around. It's digitized, it's computerized, it's automatic based on certain factors. Um, I, I think that being able to drive people to where there's parking, um, would be really wonderful. Um, I, I don't know how, how the parking garage is, is, um, I can understand where they, they would say they wouldn't want that in the grant for this, because every dollar that they are investing, it sounds as if they really wanna know that that's going to be, um, that's going to be grown. It's going to have a return on investment. My last thing is just on the Village Hall. I really believe Village Hall should be restored. I really would love to see public, private funding go into that. I, I think it would be fantastic, the second floor, to be able to invest seven hundred thousand dollars of the value of that, if I heard that figure correctly. Knowing on return on investment and hearing Rory's valuation of square footage, I would say renting that out and putting that in the proposal, um, w- w- would signify that perhaps we're not as, um, savvy as everything else that's coming out, because that's a lot of money. And, and especially Frank, your family develops seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, to be able to put out to, to recoup seven or eight hundred dollars a month might not be, um, you know, a great return. Oh, one last thing, fifteen thousand dollars marketing, cut it out completely or put in a figure that makes sense. Because otherwise, to me, that's a huge red flag. Fifteen thousand dollars doesn't go anywhere.
Keith, just to all clarify, the money related to Village Hall essentially or Village Office Building goes something to the effect of, and this is just, uh, spitballing from what the proposal was, something like, uh, what was it, eighty thousand ish for the vault? Or was that the wall? Trying to remember.
The wall, eighty and a hundred depending on what they call it, you know, thirty.
The facade is about two hundred fifty thousand. The, uh, contingency is huge. That puts this, pushed us over five hundred thousand for that stuff. The remainder that we couldn't get, uh, really exact numbers from, uh, La Bella on, but Rory's looked at it. Uh, Shaun and I looked at it, had the same general thoughts, about a quarter million dollars would be enough to refurbish the second or third floors to a point where somebody else could come in and do their build out, uh, at that point. So, you know, don't overspend on it because somebody else gonna have a different use for it if you do that. And then it is wasted money. The, the, the asterisk on the whole thing is getting an elevator, you know, to the side of this building, which would be a five hundred thousand dollar expense most likely, maybe a little bit less. But that's the general rule of thumb, it started five hundred thousand and worked backwards.
Superior.
Yep, exactly. And that's why I'm saying on the high side of what I, people think they know there. But again, utilizing grants to get there, uh, in that situation. So I just wanna clarify that ultimately.
Yeah, uh, I would add too, that because of that, if we do add an elevator, the total rehabilitation cost of this goes one point two million.
Understood.
Yeah.
And eighteen dollars for it would, are you gonna pay that off?
Well, then it's gonna sit here and just keep collecting dust and keeping an eyes for it. I mean, you, that's again, why we're here, why we're doing New York Ford at all, why DRI, you've been existed to a certain extent. So keep that in mind. Thank.
Instead, we're in favor of fixing the facade, because that does, you know, increase the value of the area to have the facade correct. And of course, there's the sense of repair, which I think we basically need to spend out of our own dollars instead of waiting for it to go forward to possibly happen, depends on the time line, but.
Keith, are you, are you gonna go or you have any last thought?
No, I'm just, I, I'm really optimistic. I'm hopeful. I hope that this comes through. I think it's fantastic that you're applying for it. I think it's fantastic that we've had some studies done and we've had some fleshing out some ideas that, that make it more, uh, more likely for them to view it favorably. I hope they view it favorably. And I, I, I caught, I just say that if that doesn't occur, I hope you guys, you know, work together earlier to be able to overcome that in the future, because I, I do think we're worth the investment. But I, I've heard a lot of great ideas that I think you could have been able to utilize. That's it. Thanks.
And just so people, um, are aware, uh, the process, I think it starts, if, if we are awarded the grant, uh, we start working with a team starting January of next year. So just so.
Probably, probably.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, uh, we have one more hand right now. If anybody else on Zoom has the, uh, desire to talk, please raise your hand now would be the time to do it, because when I'm out of hands, we're gonna move forward here and move out of public comment. So here's your last chance, raise your hand if you wanna give public comment on this. But in the meantime, I'm gonna allow Donna Dardaris to speak. And Donna, make sure you, uh, unmute, please.
Okay, I think I took it off mute.
You're good.
Um.
Donna, just your name and your address, don't forget.
Huh? Oh, Donna Dardaris, sixty-four Middle Street in Boston Spa.
Thank you.
First, I wa, I wanna say I have enjoyed the discussion today, because it was a discussion and everyone wasn't talking over each other. And I heard a lot of great ideas. So that's good. Um, I do have some comments mostly on what has been said. Uh, Shaun, I think you are being way overly optimistic about incentivizing private business owners to allow the public to come in and use their bathrooms. Um, the main reason, the BSBPA, um, at least when I was on the board, that we rented the porta potty for Wiswol Park for the farmer's market and for the concerts. And at, at the time, we had the concerts at Wiswol and the movies, was because we got complaints from private business owners on Front Street that our clients, our people were coming in and using their bathrooms. I like the idea, whether it's our space or belongs to another entity. I think Ben mentioned using the bottle museum, the library, other places, um, to perhaps put a public bathroom. I think that would be great if we're going to put money into refurbishing the back of the library and the library board agrees with it. Maybe we could build something there or put a visitor's center there. Um, I also think we should preserve Village Hall in any way we can. I will tell you, um, having seen what Rory did with the old Franklin Lodge on, uh, Route fifty, I would trust his judgment on what to do with old buildings any day of the week, because he turned that from what was nothing but an eyesore into a gorgeous, beautiful building on that street. And I have been fortunate enough to see the one area of the inside that he did not renovate, to see what it looked like, what the interior looked like, and the interior is as gorgeous as the outside. Um, I like the idea of the ground floor visitor's center, uh, within Village Hall, if that could be renovated. I think Rory brought that up too. Um, I, I just, I love the discussion. I think these are all great ideas. Um, I probably agree with Keith that we should have had more discussion. I also agree with Gina. When you're talking about parking, the shared parking space does not answer the issue for the small business owners along Front Street, because the hours they're open, that parking isn't shared. Um, so if we can, anything we can think of to make that better for them. And I know, I've heard several times, we did a study, we've got lots of parking places. We did a study, we got lots of parking places. Unfortunately, you can say that three thousand times and the public perception is, and the business owner's perception is, we don't have parking spaces, because where we have them is not where they want them, need them, whatever. So right now, the perception is the reality, I think, as far as they're concerned. So I don't know how we address that. I don't pretend to have answers. I just like other people's good ideas. Um, but I think, I'm just glad that what everyone is working together to try to come up with what's best for the village. Thank you.
Uh, thanks for your work on the committee as well. We didn't get to thank you personally, like we did Ray and Rory who were in the building today. So thank you again. Sorry about that. Yeah, it's, it's her pleasure. I think, sorry Donna. Uh, let's see, we do have one more hand. That's why I was, uh, trying to, uh, rush around here. Dana Womer, uh, will be allowed to talk again. If anybody else has the last thing to say, this is the time to raise your hand. In the meantime, Dana, again, thank you as well, uh, for being on the committee and the floor is yours.
Can you hear me? Okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, uh, Dana Womer, uh, eighteen Coronado Way. And I have served on this committee and I'm also the executive admin for the BSBPA. And I just really wanted to echo what Donna said, uh, this has been a really great conversation. I've really, having that through other meetings, I really just really appreciate how everybody's taking the time to listen to everybody. Everybody has really constructive, um, comments. And so it's really actually been quite a joy listening to you. Um, and also it was a true joy working on this project. I told Bernadette when I was, um, reading through, um, the draft of the, the grant, I actually got goosebumps when I got to the part about everything that's already been done to the village. All the development that's been done, the buildings that have already been fixed up. And it just made me so jazzed to like be part of this community. And, um, knowing what has already been done, um, just gives me such excitement for the future to see what, what could be done. Um, and I will echo with, uh, what Donna said about the bathroom porta potties. We do, the BSBPA does, um, put porta potties in the parks for our events, uh, because of that reason of, um, businesses not wanting, uh, people to, to come into their buildings. And also, uh, we lock them when we're not using them, just to keep nefarious things from happening. Um, and then my last point, I just wanted to clarify the section for the internet, that it wouldn't cost the village much for internet to be installed, the, the fiber to be installed into the village. But that money that was in the grant was to provide wifi to the downtown area. Is that correct?
Yes, to instantly not require the hundred dollar investment by customers to be what created the wifi hotspot in kind of a mishmash throughout the community that might become a full network, but not necessarily.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that's where the money was coming from, not, not that it was costing us to bring it in, but just providing it.
They, they, there are some tax consequences that some of these companies may look for some help with because of the way New York State characterizes broadband on those, uh, poles. And so, uh, we can't be sure that they were not gonna ask for some assistance along the way as well. And, you know, again, I think you saw last Monday, the balancing act here is everybody and his brother seems to want competition for spectrum around here. So there's a certain good price tag, uh, associated with doing that. And we'll see who, what the different offerings are if we are awarded this ultimately. Even if we're not, we'll see what else is out there and what the possibilities are.
That's all I had. I just wanted to say thanks for a great meeting.
Thanks Dana. Good luck.
Thousand does, does seem like a lot, just so we instantly get it, because I think we'll just, you know, provide wifi in the stores and it's going over, but, I mean, it's, it's the number you've got right now.
Yeah, call a timeout real quick and it's switch, uh, microphone approach.
Are we gonna go forward here?
Okay. Yeah, I figured that too. We'll, we'll, we'll work on that once we get there. I, it's probably a twenty percent. Give or take. Yeah, it's lasting, uh, as long as I thought it might, so we're good. We could start with some things that might be easier. Or just little tweaks, maybe. Make sure, grab the microphone at this point as you wanna talk and this will also force us to go in one, one at a time approach a little bit. So go ahead.
So for example, maybe we could agree to put, um, I would shift some money from the arts to the marketing. Marketing could be like sixty thousand or something. I like arts too, but we need both. Um, and arts fifty-five thousand or something like that. Um, so I don't know. So that, that's a little tweak. Um, and then the other little tweak, maybe we could agree to, again, we're gonna do planning file if we get the grant to figure out the details. But, um, rather than a standalone bathroom, have it part of some structure. Are those things that we can have a consensus on? And then we'll get others.
Well, I, I, how about making the wording a little more vague? Well, no, no, I'm, I'm being honest with this, that, uh, still looking for a small, uh, information booth facility that might include bathrooms. But, uh, bathrooms are also part of the category for possibly a location other than that location. Something along those lines? Okay, so I mean, it, it is vague then as it's written.
I can change the photo, make it seem less like we're trying to go for that specific type of thing, so it's not.
It says they akin to Bryant Park facility.
I, yeah, I will take that out. Yeah, in the picture too. Well, that's what I just.
Use microphone, everyone, please.
So photo change.
Yeah, um, something about money to provide a public restroom.
Facility.
Facility in the downtown village business area.
In the New York Forward Zone.
The New York Forward Zone, yeah. Make it a little bit vaguer and then, because this is really the first step is the planning grant, where, where consultants work with you and go through each of these and you'll get to having full concepts for each project.
Yeah, you're probably right. This, this is the goal, uh, some public bathroom is good to just have it.
Okay, yeah. Um. Flash out Wiswol Park.
All right, so that's that.
I don't think anybody's objected to one fifty in Wiswol at this point. Has anybody?
No.
No worries, better.
Yeah.
Folks, okay, public comment's over, guys. We gotta go to finish this at this point.
I think.
Liz, I just said that, Liz. Keep going.
So are we gonna ship some money over to marketing from that?
That'd be my suggestion.
I agree.
Yeah, um, I think marketing is probably the most important thing. I would also ship one, some other things we have on here that we could cut toward marketing. I mean, I think fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, uh, out of the ballpark for my friend.
Well, I mean, marketing's an ongoing thing. So this is like a one shot. You know, I'm okay, I, I guess the number I was thinking of like sixty thousand area. And I think the signage is gonna cost more than fifteen thousand, but that'd be a great use of this funds, you know, one-time funding to really enhance the signage, parking, bathroom, history, visitor center, everything.
I feel like Saratoga has really nice signs.
I think it would be good to, to address this definitely, because this was something that started what, like, year and a half ago, two years ago. And it, it kind of went, when prosperity partnership dissolved, like it just didn't, it stalled.
Well, it started.
No, they were recommendation.
Yeah, well, so actually this is a committee, um, that I was a part of, because when I was on the BSBPA, they asked me to be on the committee to do the rebrand. It was a very weird process and I think it needs to be more community driven than it was. It was, they brought in a consultant that was almost pushed on the village, which was just uncomfortable for everybody. So, um, I'm, I'm fine with any particular number, you know, um, say, what do you, sixty thousand to, for marketing, which includes the sign.
It's expensive.
That, that's.
I did tell you it was expensive.
No, I know it's expensive, but sixty's height. So I can tell you some signage, uh, during the first site, purchasing.
We're talking a lot of signs, potentially.
Right, but don't over, don't over sign either. Shaun, Shaun, Shaun's down there saying the same thing. Do never ever over sign.
If you use too many signs, people get signed fifteen and they just don't.
It's so, I, I would stick in something like doubling it or up to forty thousand.
Aren't we talking more of a, a marketing plan?
A new, yeah.
A new logo, a new branding, a new communication strategy.
Look, the new branding list, that, that's your own take on it. Nobody's saying that Village of Friends is a bad idea. Maybe re-characterizing how you're saying it is the branding approach, but.
That's a teacher conversation.
Yeah, seriously.
Regardless, you know, and that's a committee decision. And that was something we were discussing when they started that. But, um, how much, there's like a lot of signs over the T. You're saying, what is a reasonable cost for signs in the opinion?
I, I guess it all depends, like the LCD sign we're looking at, I mean, that's probably.
That's a different, that's, that's part of the bathroom budget.
Yeah, um, but static signage?
Yeah.
You know.
Two hundred dollars maximum per sign and pole. If you're going pure pole and sign like that.
You're going metal signs, yeah.
If you're going like a, hold, hold on, I can give you perspective to answer a question here of what we've just. If you're going like a, hold on, I can give you perspective to answer a question here of what we've just went through. Kelly Park signs, for instance, the main sign was a thousand, I believe, thereabouts. So also depends on one side, two side signs, welcome built to ball spots signs are already in practice to be replaced, so.
Why did it cost ten thousand for this, for the crosswalk sign?
Because we have seven sets of four basically that are in that.
But I meant something more like, like in Saratoga Springs, where they really tell you where everything is.
But remember the biggest thing everybody said, I think also besides keep more parking and get your sidewalks in shape, but don't make the Saratoga Springs either.
No, but they did, they did in the surveys, they did say more signage.
I don't think the signs are what Saratoga Springs is, it's a way to find what's in Saratoga Springs.
So a couple of things on this. I think there needs to be coordination with the BSCPA because they pay currently for some signs where, you know, the businesses. So we, I think for now, I don't think we do need a huge amount of sign money. It's just a matter of how much we want to drop into marketing itself, working with a firm.
When we are saying marketing, wouldn't that be engaging the BSCPA?
Yeah, they had, so according to the Economic Development Committee, they had an appointed, well, not like, so had selected person, usually somebody on the marketing committee. So they are part of it. There was other, like, there was a member from prolific, there's local businesses, some artists on it. So there's definitely going to be minds on it, but they ultimately are going to have to select a company to do the marketing. They can't do it necessarily. We can't, it was just the way that was structured from the Economic Development Committee or Economic Development.
I'd say shift twenty five thousand dollars, make it forty, which I think is a fair amount to not go overboard, but you know, underdo what you, what you're all suggesting necessarily.
It's okay, let's go down.
All right, well, so.
So are we, so that. We should also, I don't want to lose, we should also include this meeting in our public engagement list because we have further public engagement this meeting, just in case it helps out. So sorry about that.
So we are moving some funds from arts, which is sort of this big, vague category, we don't really know what it'll be for. But that's where the money is going from arts to marketing.
Sixty arts and forty marketing.
Well, how about this? I would almost say you go back to the two and a quarter million dollar building and parking garage. Move it down to two million dollars with the concentration on the building, the commercial building in front and creation of additional parking in the absence of that parking. Because Liz, you're going to get value from a private developer for that land that you can reinvest into that park garage, which is probably about a four million dollar structure at the end of the day.
Can we get on this, please?
I mean.
We don't know exactly how the garage is going to.
It's about four for a moderate three story approach.
How are you going to fit a building and a three story is as high as you want to go there, right? Yeah. So then you've got just garage and then where's the building? It's not a room.
There is more room back there than you think. We have to look at the property lines of that back, but it does go back to the dumpsters at least.
I've looked at the property line, that lot is not that big and you got to get up to BACC. So I do not see how you're going to fit a garage and a building, fit one or the other, but not.
Or you could, or the original thing, thought I had was you put the garage in its two stories on the entirety and put a office slash mixed use approach on the top floor.
In other words, you're going to go into the underground parking.
You don't have to necessarily, you save three stories as long as you excavate into the hill.
Excavate into the hill?
Yeah, you, you cut out part of the hill, so it'd be partial underground, partial.
Much like this building, it's basically the walk up approach.
Well, I don't know, I think this needs a whole lot more work to be anything. I mean, it's, as others have said, it's kind of thrown in there without a lot of.
But, but having it there as this like, all right, here's another two million rest. Will that hurt our chance? Like, maybe they'll say, no, we don't want the garage, plus the rest.
I don't think it hurts us to say.
I think if we can make a clean break between the two.
Yeah.
This is an addendum.
Originally I did have it written as such, and then you took it out.
I, I think then you can say, well, I can leave it there and it gives, it gives them a path to say, all right, but we're not going to give you that, but we'll give you that.
Look, there are other communities in this region that probably will say they have some crappy ideas and at least this community has an idea and actually use for, and look at their surveys, it's, it's.
I'm fine keeping it in.
Okay, and what, at what amount? Because I eventually.
You're saying it's two four million to build, but we're.
But there would be a private investment component on top of it and anything else, we could go for low interest loans or brands for fixtures and equipment that go associated with it.
You want to say that in here then, this is actually going to cost four million, but we're going to partner whoever.
Well, when you're talking about what's going on top of the two, you're probably six, four to six million at that point based on. No, no, I'm not, I'm not trying to lie to you, you're now putting a floor up top, so there's additional expense to that.
Wouldn't hit this off with parking is the first word here.
With attached public parking garage.
Public, private, maybe building, because that way it makes it sound like.
Right, and the participant or the sponsor, whatever it is, is split at the bottom of it as.
Yeah.
Villa Jan or private participants.
Put that up. Private, public, what do you want me to put? I'm sorry.
Public, private? I would put that up front, a pi, a public, private building.
Well, you have that second sense. It's your second sense.
Yeah, second, second.
So it just puts that first.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. So we are still, I mean, that's two twenty five, that's a separate.
Yeah, that's its own thing.
Its own thing.
What I'm saying is you might be able to take that down to two million safely, play with two fifty more that if you got it, you would have to distribute around back to arts and other things that you want here. And if you don't get it, you don't get it, but you know, enjoy where you are with the two point two five, let's say.
Yeah, but for now, let's just put sixty thousand in for arts, that's a lot of money for arts. I mean, compared to how much, what's our total arts budget?
What's our total arts budget or what should our total arts budget be?
What is it now?
It's BS is what it is, I tell you.
Just ask the question, what is it now?
It's low, it's, Liz, it's under a thousand dollars, I think. And then fortified with the Saratoga Arts Plan.
No, I mean, with the, the events and everything, that's all part of that.
I'm not sure, is that embracing them? Are the events embracing them?
I said place making strategy, so any, anything that's going to drop people, I, that's why I, arts projects are a part of place making.
Once you put family fun day in there, probably double the entire amount if not more.
So you want me to include the family fun day? No, I mean, I would say arts and events.
Arts and events.
You know, well, you said community engagement projects, that's events.
Well, you, you have to make it, I think, somewhat tangible for what they're looking for here. The intangibilities don't seem to fit in well with things that they're saying in this signs, you know, or wayfinding or signs. You can say that's what this is going for. To say an event, I think starts getting you off in the direction that I don't think intended.
Community engagement and projects is fine, that's basically what events are. So that's, let's sixty thousand there, forty in marketing, are we agreed on that?
Fine.
I'm fine with that.
Fine.
Okay.
But what was, yeah, what was the total between before? I don't think you actually accounted for. I think we basically went up twenty five thousand for wayfinding a sign, so it should be seventy five for arts at that point.
Okay.
All right, so seventy five thousand arts and how much for marketing?
Forty.
That enough? If we're taking it out of the parking garage, it's probably go higher.
No, we're not, we're currently not, she said, so I gave that as an option, it was summarily dismissed by the crowd and now we're moving on to the two twenty five.
Almost a separate grant.
Yep.
Forty and seventy five.
Okay, now.
I still think forty is down the lower end.
Yeah, I do too.
Can I, this is the part where I could say, Dana, I see you're still there. Can you give us some kind of high sign or something about what you think on that marketing number overall? I know you may be slightly biased, I get that, but it would be good to hear from you before we put that in stone. Hold on one second, I'm going to have to do the reverse microphone approach real quick, so I'm going to lie to talk, but don't talk quite yet.
Hi, do I need to say my name again? Can you hear me?
Go ahead Dana.
Can you hear me? Hello?
There you are, go ahead.
Okay, hi, can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, um, I will say that we as the BSCPA are a hundred percent using a full nine thousand dollars this year just on managing our social media, doing social, like, social media ad.
What was the number of the data?
Nine thousand.
Ninety?
At least, nine, N-I-N-E. And that's just with having partnering with prolific marketing and having them manage our social media and then doing some print ads and a few other things. That, I mean, it eats it up really quickly and so like sixty thousand doesn't seem outrageous. Especially if you're doing signs, if you want to do rebranding, if you want to work with a firm on anything like that, that would.
I mean, you're balancing between arts and marketing and basically you're pulling from the arts pool to get to marketing, what would you do?
So I, I disagree that events fall in the same category as arts, like when I think of arts, I think of like actual art, like, you know, actual art being brought into the community, whether it's sculptures or murals or things like that, when I think of the arts. But I don't know if I, I would lump events in it, so I, I don't, I don't know exactly what I would move over, but I think like fifty to sixty thousand is not outrageous to have for marketing. I think fifteen is really well.
Right, we're up to forty.
Oh, forty, I would say fifty.
I would agree with that.
Especially if you're including signs, wayfinding things in it on top of maybe some branding and a, an updated website or something like that, you could easily hit that, depending on what you want to do.
Fifty and sixty five. Are you going to help Mark raise money for the businesses for the birdhouses?
I've got Mark's number. He has mine.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah.
Would you agree to take out the reference to USDA and that?
Why?
And where, which?
In the R building?
Well, let's get to, let's get to the, let's do the town last, because that is a tough, not a tough puzzle.
Are we good on street gates?
Yeah, I have no idea how much that costs. My personal opinion, you can obviously, we're waiting for those all, I think we should take some of that project, put it up.
So that's why we have to sort of agree, I mean, five hundred and thirty, you take this building to renew facade.
And, and I think that includes storm windows, if I remember.
I thought it did as well.
Yeah, includes the storm windows, which are.
Can we open this door?
Yeah.
Is it too loud?
Use your microphones if you do it.
So the, the. The five thirty includes storm windows, it included the storm windows, the facade, the repairs. And I think that's where I would feel comfortable on the village office repairs.
I also think that they already have an estimate from an engineering firm that you put into the application or at least referenced. It increases our chances of getting one.
But then you're going to have to take out this idea that it's going to make the upper floors non vacant because you're putting nothing into the upper floors. I get, I get you're going to say there's a synergistic view that if you approve the facade and the structure, maybe it gets people to come, but that's not going to be what really gets people to come. You got to, you got to get an elevator in here and you're going to have to get those floors at least molded.
That's your opinion, we can go down the street.
Hey Keith Lewis says I'm a developer.
That don't have elevators that are full.
So what if you put apartments up there?
Exactly.
And apartments are going for more money now.
I would think that'd be problematic because who knows, the way they changed the rules during the pandemic, do we really want to get into that situation? If we have to evict somebody, it's a complicated process, I don't really know.
Saying selling the, and that's what people confuse it for is apartments, just like every other building down Front Street. And you would be actually part of the streetscape.
So, so, so let me, let me ask you a question. Point to me in the existing list of things where you're creating jobs, businesses and reducing vacancies. If, if, if you throw up this building, so throw up this building, show me where else you've got it.
I don't think what you proposed here is going much towards that because I think we've come to the conclusion that you're only going to get one floor and.
I'm not sure that was the conclusion, it's, there are three options, I said you have this building, one is to rent both floors.
You just don't have enough room down here, you're going to have to go up. A lot of those records have got to stay accessible, you got what, two rooms?
The safe is empty right now, the vault is empty.
You want to put person in there?
No, but you're saying the records that are up there, not all records that are up there have to stay here, we can identify what needs to be here. And we, we are not utilizing the downstairs space to its maximum.
Well, it's.
There's no way we're doing that, I'll tell you.
Any way to, to frame this as a partnership, even though the partner is not known yet? But to say we will spend money in this grant to fix up the bottom part, I mean, the location of this building is perfect and the, and it's a beaut, you know, it's a nice play, I hate abandoning it, I don't know. But picks up the facade, do the structural stuff, get a bathroom and a visitor center downstairs and then say we will partner with some unknown entity, our goal is to do the, for them to do the upstairs and take that over. Is that a model to, so we're not investing?
Where are you going to put the people that are downstairs now? You're going to have to use at least, I'd say if you're going to get a nice conference room and then I think putting bidders at center downstairs is a great idea, it's a great location for it, but you got to move those folks then up.
So are you going to tell the cheeks you're taking away their office?
They need that vault, you don't have a vault upstairs.
Well, and the room down here, you know, the details, we're talking details now, but I just think that putting seven hundred thousand into the village office building is going to make the grant less attractive.
You're putting five thirty into the village office building regardless, you're saying. The question is, what is that accomplishing? That is renovating the exterior and the portions that are structurally unsound currently. It's doing nothing to get you ability to turn those into usable spaces. Realistically, no, it's not. And that's why I'm saying you please point to me somewhere else in this application that embraces what is a major goal of this New York Forward Grant, which is removing vacancies, creating businesses, creating employment.
Well, but this is a municipal vacancy. I mean, when I talked about the village hall with the grand height, I don't know, but she asks, is this a purely municipal, you know, building and it really is at this point.
Correct, we're converting it, we're converting it.
Yeah.
Like you said, the public private partnership, but we're saying we're going to have to incentivize somebody to come in and or start the process upstairs and say, hey, look, Scott, good floors here, look at the ceilings, it'll look great, now go ahead, put your.
But how do we do, how do we get an adequate village hall for village hall business and a conference room and get?
And move those people.
Can I be honest with you? You're not going to go to a conference room upstairs, realistically.
How are we going to make this work, like, so this isn't adequate, you know, there's lack of space, this lack of space, like.
Currently, currently we're using library and libraries expansion has taken into account the usage of that basement still. If we end up ever with a building like the cooperative building, you've seen that we'll get better technology obviously for it, but we could turn that into our meeting room if we ever got down to that. You don't necessarily have to marry village offices with your meeting room ultimately. You, you don't, so I, I don't know how they got so interlinked in that discussion.
I think this whole application just is more municipally based and that may cost us getting this money because other, other municipalities have.
We go to capital letters, the conversion of the second and third floor is to turn it into private use most likely, or to allow for other existing buildings that are currently in municipal use into private use. Most likely, or to allow for other existing buildings that are currently in municipal use into private use. Okay, that that that's where, what it is.
Let, let's, let's take it down to five thirty, and.
Basically, okay, I I I'm gonna ask you again, I mean, challenge you again, show me where in this application, you have checked the boxes of. Removing vacancies, creating business opportunities.
Application, this is yours.
No, it's ours, Liz.
Or the committees, yes, it is, but you brought us in.
Right, but you haven't named a project that accomplishes that, even in all your aside.
Too late to to research those projects, I mean, so there's something, we gotta do something with village hall. It is an issue, you know, so this is what we're gonna do, and it it's, it may not be the strongest. Projects, just because it is really heavily municipal.
Not municipal.
Alright, alright.
No, 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 I I I I'm not trying to be obstinate about that, the idea is to turn either those floors, which was the original idea. Or if you wanna move a function in here essentially, that frees up another building, so you can turn that into private usage. Business usage to do that, and that is what's embraced in this entire thing, again, creation of business. Employment opportunities, reduction of vacancies, okay, faceting and the beauty and the exteriors or whatnot, I think we've. Done a great job of trying to check some of those boxes with micro grants especially, because, hey, if somebody wants to come redo their facade, there's money available to do.
How many square footages on each floor?
I would have to look, uh, to be honest with you on that.
Four here, is it two thousand?
But you're losing the stairwell, so you can't use it as a.
So, there's not a lot of space, and I I just.
That's why I say you're not gonna use a conference room, but you can use it as an office space.
Um, I.
Well, what if we don't, what if we don't include the grant, I I'm just wondering if the, you know, the police and and the court have such needs. Uh, I don't know what our limits are on USDA grants slash loans.
There's, there's no such thing, I think, as a limit as much as availability of funds, it's what Chris.
Yeah, well, we.
Chris is like, hey, we got a bunch of things we can do with you in the village, he didn't say, hey, we only got five dollars, so we can give to you, so.
Well, there's, there's a limit.
There's a limit to everything, Liz, but I don't think a five hundred thousand dollar elevator after one point two million dollars in equipment. Is suddenly gonna raise the red flag, there are municipalities that take millions from these programs, millions.
Yeah, but they have a little bit more money than we do in the bank.
Part of this, so, the the committee spent a lot of time, um, talking about quality of life and like accessibility, and. I mean, I don't know, I think it would be great if this building became more accessible to upper levels, and and you do need that elevator to make that possible.
If you use it as a municipal building, otherwise, this could be a restaurant, um, and the upper floors could be residential, and. If I was, you know, investor, this is a wonderful location, um, for that type of development, and then I don't have to build an elevator, it's a walk up. Um, and I pay one third less than you guys, and I can get some tax credits, that's. I, from an economic development standpoint, that's what I would do with this building. It's a beautiful building, I know it's been the village hall, I lived here for what, a year and a half? Didn't even know it was village hall, I mean, I was just, didn't have any real cause, what, I came once, you know, it's.
You were li- used to living in a town, in a village, in a city, have a different structure, really, really, and so.
No, I was in, I was in, I was in town hall quite a bit, actually.
Right.
I think some of those, just as many, like, but that has grown up.
Good.
Can, um, this is actually a building people actually very much care about, if you talk to some of the people that have. Live there, live here their entire lives, and they're in their sixties and seventies, so, to to make it more vibrant in this way, and still have. The services of the village here for now, until, you know, I don't know. I I I like it as proposed, I it I it seems like, I mean, disagree, um.
But we all wanna cut some money.
Either this is gonna be a municipal building, and we're gonna put an elevator in, and we're gonna put a conference, important police. First of all, I don't think the police want anything to do with this whatsoever, I think it's completely unworkable for them, but. Either we do that, because that's what we've heard from the public, or we get the facade and the things that have to be fixed. And we get this on the tax roll, um, I I, and I think it should be written one way or the other. We can argue about how much money gets assigned to that, but I really think that's how it's gotta be written, because I think. The hybrid between the two, I I just, I don't see that, um, as really going over.
How about a sale, how about a sale leaseback approach?
What's that?
How about a sale leaseback approach, and we still do use it, but it becomes a private building that's leased back to us for our current functions.
What are we gonna pay in lease after, if they have to pay taxes?
I don't know, but obviously, we're gonna be selling it for something in the seven picker range, and we're putting in all the renovations, and if they don't wanna pay it, then at least we have it.
But, but you're not putting in historic league.
Well, we shouldn't be doing a historic facade either, that should all be ripped off.
Really? Well, you can do a historic light facade without. Well, no, no, when Lance, when Lance read those figures, he did it with the assumption it wasn't a historic building for the definition, but. Could be still maintained in the same general manner, just not using the exact ornamentation and paints and wood and windows.
Wouldn't look the same?
It would look very much the same.
Yeah, well, the thing is, some of those people who wanna preserve historic structures may have problems.
But that's why it went up to seven hundred plus thousand dollars last time, probably in the eights now.
That's why you mentioned quarter million, just in the side.
Yeah.
Know what you said?
Yeah, but that's doing it, that's doing it without historical perspective.
But if somebody had a use for this building, where they can make.
Approached us, so, I mean, not to my knowledge.
We have nowhere to go either.
Well, a little bit, I mean, if somebody really, really loved it and wanted to preserve, I, you know, organizations do reach out to, you know. Entities to, you know, uh, say, we wanna purchase this and preserve it, but but there hasn't been that clamoring.
I mean, um, if you wanna put this the way it is. I'm not gonna fight it, cause I don't wanna fight, I think this should go in, but I think if this doesn't, if this doesn't happen. I think that's one of the.
Hey, if a planner comes through and says, yeah, you know, you shouldn't, then you got two hundred thousand dollars more to put into micro grants and revolving loans at that point.
Yeah, but I.
Which, which, which is essentially that pool is gonna do the same thing that what the intention is upstairs ultimately too, so. In some way, shape, or form, we're saying we've got a shifting scale of that two hundred fifty thousand dollars could be put into micro grants if it's not gonna be used for upstairs.
Okay, but will you please just take out the specific of you say. We will, other, we will pay for an elevator with other grants, it's fine, I just don't want it in writing that. We are saying USDA money will be used for that, just say.
That's, that's fine, although, again, I I I've been, and Chris had no problems about me saying out loud. That you could seek a grant for it, so I just want you to know that.
Yeah, but we could also seek a grant for other things.
Wood, wow.
Yeah, no, I just say that there are other things that I think, if we're gonna be able to get grants, we should. Get them for those purposes, that's why I just wanted out.
Three fifty for library, I'm gonna use yours, let me cheat off you here, flip it, I guess, um. One fifty for whiz wall, uh, one fifty for, uh, interactive visitor information center in some location, a bathroom somewhere.
That's enough if we redevelop something, is that the right number for adding onto a building, or?
Again, it it, you would build a smaller information center and you put that money into wherever you're building on to.
I thought the idea that Rory had to have the information center in the basement here, and have maybe one office there, so there'd be somebody eyes on.
It's a little tight down there.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not a deep floor, it doesn't go to the.
All of that should be retail space, trust me, we went back and forth.
I literally gave him the grand.
Retail, but the visitor's center can be, is, can be pretty small.
But even for the bathrooms, I think it's like.
Well, you can expand.
Our existing bathroom down there is under the vault, just about, that's how weird it is.
You would remodel the whole floor.
Could be that.
Not going there, fiber optics to possibly contribute toward what's needed there, fifty thousand, uh.
Five, is that the right number?
Sixty-five and then fifty for market.
Yeah, because that's one fifteen total still, two thirty-five on streetscape, and two and a quarter still for the, if we are lucky enough to get four and a half. Here's what else we'd do with it, creating more commercial space and a possible parking alternative.
We had a sense two thirty-five for streetscape, we had about.
Well, that, it will take, it will take more, but again, there are other ones.
This also has gotta be coordinated with our change in sidewalk code, obviously, which now we're a lot closer to doing.
Streetscape.
Carla has a bunch of questions first, I need to let you know about sidewalk, so that she can complete it, so we will not get code for Monday, but she can give us questions in the interim. Just so you know, I meant to tell you that earlier, um.
Just to follow up on that streetscape thing, those fall on transportation grants, so we could get money elsewhere.
I should write that down in there too, or?
Well.
Just leave it.
Yeah, just leave it.
Can, can I get a motion that may be authorized to sign a submit New York Ford application on or before September twenty-third, twenty twenty-two? The application to be utilized is the one, or one agreed upon during the special meeting, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, the village board trustees. Minor grammatical spelling and formatting changes are permitted for submission, beyond changes required during said meeting.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I've got a few for, yeah.
Okay, Fundesa, and then bask in on the motion, and second, discussion now is appropriate, go ahead.
Uh, I think, no, I think we've talked.
We're gonna roll call, just to, if you do have something you wanna add to say now, pass the microphone around to do it, okay?
Yeah, I just hope the next grant, and I'm sure there'll be another one that we work on, that that we work together sooner. So that we can, can all.
I have a fearness to burn a debt here, especially, she did send the projects out on Friday of last week, and the first thing we got back was on Monday, and then. I think it was only one person who gave substantive comments, another gave kind of procedural or thoughts generally, so. We could have all done better, Liz, at various points, and it's, we really could.
Saying that, next time, let's do better, let's keep our eyes open for for grants, and, um, and I'm as guilty as that. It's that ADA grant coming up, and that's tight, but it doesn't have this kind of application.
Sean, take the microphone, so I'll go first, we'll go clockwise.
You know, so that we do, do a better job next time.
Give it to Sean, cause we're, we're gonna lose the battery on this phone in a second. Uh, yea or nay, and any reason?
Uh, yay, but I think we've already discussed it at length, so.
Okay, Liz?
Yep, yay.
Ben?
I'll say yay too.
Burnett?
Yes.
I, and I will say again, this, I will say yay, uh, for the reasons of, at the, end of the day, we, this is money we don't have, and so. I'm just hoping we get it, and anything we did with it, as long as it wasn't going to transform the village in a way that the public didn't want. This is bonus for everybody in a positive, and people are worried about taxes going up and everything else, would have the opposite effect realistically, so I want people to know that out there, that. This is not an attempt to raise the standard of living that takes taxes with it and costs, but. It's trying to make sure that we stay affordable in this area while presenting a really, really great appearance facade and approach for our business district. Uh, can I get a motion that the meeting be adjourned at whatever time it is right now, which is four twenty-seven PM?
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Fundesa.
Second.
Trusty Raymond, discussion, I'll see all of you on Monday evening, for us, we can have a meeting, it's even shorter than this one, all in favor. Sidewalk questions, he's emailing to us. I'm gonna be.
Oh, thank you.
Hold on.
I did have a question, guys, the the page about supportive local policies, I think I caught like a broad.